I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Livingston.
Present.
Counselor Logan.
Here.
Counselor McDonald.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Spinelli.
Present.
Counselor Regis.
Present.
Counselor Vandal. Nine here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the minutes of Monday, February 28th, 2011.
Second.
All in favor?
A question?
Yes.
On, I think there's a, just a typo. It says, Agenda item 11, vote to suspend the rule relating to Agenda item 10. Shouldn't it be Agenda item 12?
Go ahead.
That would actually be Agenda item 10 from the previous, or one of the meetings previously.
Yeah, that was from a January meeting. It was confusing how that was put in there.
Yeah, I, because on the telecast, it showed it, vote to suspend Agenda item 12 on the telecast, and I was just wondering, did I have it wrong from the telecast, or did I have it wrong from the minutes?
It was from a previous meeting. That's what it was from.
Okay. I apologize.
No, that's quite all right. That's quite all right.
Yeah.
All in favor? It was unanimous, I believe. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item number four, Subcommittee Reports, A for A General Government. Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Monday, March 7th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Logan, Committee Members, Counselor Vandal, Counselor Spinelli, Counselor McDonald, Citizen Members Gabriel LaFleche and Stephanie DiMartino. Also in attendance were Town Manager Clark, Town Clerk Madeline Dowest, Registrars James Dyer and John Sypek and Mark Moran. Counselor Regis was excused. Chairman Logan called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to move Precinct 2 to Community Center. Ms. Dowest discussed the meeting held with the registrars and their request to move Precinct 2, West Street School, to the Community Center where the other four precincts are located. Discussion was held on the pros and cons of such a move, and more information was requested. Ms. Dowest will gather the information requested. A motion was made by Mr. LaFleche and seconded by Counselor Spinelli with a favorable recommendation to counsel to approve the move to Precinct 2 from West Street School to the Community Center. Vote by show of hands, four in favor, two opposed, Counselor McDonald and Citizen Member DiMartino. Agenda item number two, vote to exact agreement with National Grid. Mr. Clark discussed the agreement between the town and National Grid to install a power line along Commercial Drive in the amount of $461,090.67. As part of the, excuse me, as part of the extension agreement, the town is required to construct Phase 1 of the Industrial Park Road, and that includes related power utilities. Mr. Clark said that we have $180,000 remaining from the funds to construct the road, which will be used as partial payment for the agreement with National Grid. The balance would then be $281,090.67. Casella has agreed to fund the balance of the agreement with National Grid and split the balance of $281,090.67 with the town. Casella would pay $140,545.33, and the town would pay $140,545.34. In return, the town is to make reimbursement payments out of the anticipated proceeds from the landfill gas-to-energy, LGE, project of 50% of each monthly LGE project payment until such time as the town's $140,543, 100, excuse me, $140,543.33 base amount has been met, and from then on, the town will receive 100% of the LGE project payment. A motion was made by Counselor McDonald and seconded by Counselor Spinelli with a favorable recommendation to counsel to accept the agreement with National Grid in the amount of $461,090.67. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, six zero. Chairman Logan adjourned the meeting at 7:47 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera. Mr. Chairman, I have no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda item number four B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
Mr. Chairman, a meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, March 9th, 2011, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Lazo and Citizen Members Mark Moran and Maurice Capistrand. Also in attendance were Town Manager Christopher Clark and Tom Daly. Counselor Regis was excused. I called the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to approve Amendment 2 with Weston and Sampson. Mr. Clark said we are coming to a close on Commercial Drive. Mr. Clark discussed the three remaining items to be completed. Maroys will complete landscape work, number one. Number two, town obligation to provide electricity. Number three, settlement with Weston and Sampson for oversight expenses for Commercial Drive. A motion was made by Counselor Lazo and seconded by Mr. Moran with a favorable recommendation to counsel to approve Amendment number two, in the amount of $93,000, to close out the Commercial Drive project and the engineering and administrative oversight provided by Weston and Sampson. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item number two, vote to accept Amendment 3 and Amendment 4 from Weston and Sampson. Agenda item number three, vote to approve change order number three from Penta. Agenda item number four, vote to approve up to $20,000 for additional contingencies that may arise between now and the end of the project. Mr. Clark explained that Agenda item 2, 3, and 3 are related. Mr. Clark discussed each item. They are all related to the wastewater treatment plant. Agenda item number one, a motion was made by Mr. Moran and seconded by Counselor Lazo with a favorable recommendation to counsel to accept Amendment number 3 and Amendment number 4 from Weston and Sampson in the amount of $66,000, to provide continued construction for the remainder of the project from February 2011 through April 2011, which is still within the original appropriation amount. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item number two, a motion was made by Mr. Moran and seconded by Mr. Capistrand with a favorable recommendation to counsel to approve change order number 3 from Penta in the amount of $59,864, to perform additional work through the wastewater treatment plant facility. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item number three, a motion was made by Mr. Capistrand and seconded by Mr. Moran with a favorable recommendation to counsel to approve up to $20,000 for additional contingencies for any unforeseen issues that may arise between now and at the end of the project. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. Agenda item number five, vote to approve the agreement with C-Powers. Mr. Clark gave an overview of the program. A motion was made by Counselor Lazo and seconded by Mr. Moran with a favorable recommendation to counsel to approve the agreement with C-Powers to continue the power demand agreement for the town to continue generating revenue out of this program. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Mr. Moran and seconded by Mr. Capistrand. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 7:35 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording quick. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Agenda item number four C, Education Human Services, Counselor Nicola.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 in the Rice Conference Room. And I have no meeting minutes to report.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Agenda item number four D, Planning and Development, Counselor Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last Thursday, but the minutes aren't available at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Agenda item number four E, Protection of Persons and Property, Vice Chairman McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no minutes to report, and we have a Subcommittee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, March 22nd, 7:00 PM, in the Rice Conference Room.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to Agenda item number five, I just have a couple of things. First, I'd like to bring up, during a Subcommittee meeting this past week, I want to commend Mr. Mark Moran. He's a Citizen Member, and he also is on a committee that looked into doing a permitting guidebook for the town of Southbridge, which is very informational. A new business coming into town, a present business, a citizen, or any business person, contractor coming into town, this book, I've been to other towns that they've had them, but this is pretty comprehensive. He has really done a fine job, and if I left anybody out, and I'm sure I did, this is an excellent piece that they worked on, and I'm really happy with that, and I commend them all. The other thing is, I have an email that came in today from Megan Dupree, Manager of Community Development Planning of Central Mass Regional Planning Commission in Worcester. Attorney General Martha Coakley, it's an email sent, Attorney General Martha Coakley invites you to attend a meeting on the open meeting law. These meetings will provide an update on the guidance and about compliance with the recently revised open meeting law. Who should attend? Public bodies, municipal officials, members of the public, encouraged to attend. You can register, pre-register in advance by emailing to omltraining@state.mass.us. And you would put your first and last name, your town and residence, and indicate the location of the educational forum you will attend. This one here will be the Open Meeting Law Training in Central Mass, and will be held June 1st, 2011, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. The place is the Worcester Public Library, and the address is 3 Salem Square in Worcester. If anybody would like to know more about it, you can call the Town Manager's Office, and he will inform you of that. And that's all I have. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item number six, Town Managers' Announcements. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few this evening. I've received some information about a spring awakening event on March 23rd, put on by the Southbridge Merchant's Informational Mixer, sponsored by the downtown Southbridge Partnership, and that is, like I said, March 23rd at 5:30 PM in the Shades Lounge at the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center. For folks that are interested in attending that, that should be an interesting event. Next item I have is from the library. I have received a request to announce two different activities. They do have on Monday, I'm sorry, that was today, I'll take that back, one event, TAE Costello of the U.S. Census Bureau will be in Southbridge at the, at the library to present a program to local social service agency providers, and that's going to be Wednesday, March 30th, in 2011, from 10:00 to 12:00 in the Pioppi Room at the library. This presentation is a workshop on the effective use of the census data, especially for community-based human service agencies. The two-hour presentation could help you improve your presentation to your funders, find out how to use the database to customize your results for your community or your target audience. So that should be interesting as some of the census information is starting to come out. I announced this at the last meeting, and I'll just remind you of folks again, that there will be a homebuyers seminar at the Jacob Edwards Library on Monday, March 21st, from 6:30 to 7:30. Seth Pitts, a representative of the USDA, will discuss resources available to potential homebuyers from his agency, and also local lenders and real estate agents will be on hand to help homebuyers negotiate the process and answer questions. This seminar is free and open to the public. And second to last here, the Economic Development Office has asked me to announce that the Community Development Block Grant Program is seeking applicants for the Housing Rehabilitation Program in the Morse and Coombe Street, as well as the Worcester Henry Street Neighborhood Target Areas. Assistance is given in the form of deferred payment loans to the owner occupants who qualify for our income-based program. These special home improvement loans are forgiven if you retain ownership and residency for 15 years. Applicants must own their home for at least one year and have a well-established record of timely payments. If you are interested and you live in these areas, you're encouraged to call the Economic Development and Planning Office at 764-5402. If you want to find out if you're in the area or not, they have applications as well as the map of the target areas. And lastly, I just, I thought I would be remiss, it went by kind of quickly at our last meeting, but I do wish to kind of publicly thank the Town Council for my three-year extension. Thank you for your support and your confidence, and I look forward to moving forward with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Moving on to Agenda item number seven, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens who would like to speak to anything that's not on this agenda tonight? Are there any citizens who would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Kevin Boxton, 255 Elm Street. I come before the council today. I came from the solar seminar down at Jacob Edwards Library. I was able to catch enough of it to see it's very effective system, and I look forward to getting more information on it. I also come before the council tonight. I also come, I also come before the council tonight to talk about a matter that was brought up at the last Board of Health meeting, and that was weekly recycling pickup. I don't, I think it was made very clear, the benefits of having weekly as opposed to bi-weekly, especially in light of the situation of a smart cart system sooner or later coming within town. I think if you are going to, in any way, shape, or form, limit the amount of trash somebody can throw away, I think it's an important issue to make sure that they have the avenue to recycle as much as possible. Presently, at the bi-weekly system, basically, one of the difficulties is remembering which week is which week. Mr. Moran commented to the, that citizens can, can get additional toters for recycling goods if it's needed. I myself have two 96-gallon toters. For whatever reason, the last pickup I missed, whether I didn't put it out in time, I missed it. So now I'm waiting, now I have two 96 toters, an additional trash barrel full of recycled goods. If we went to a weekly pickup, citizens no longer have to wonder what week it is. If I put out my trash, I put out my recycling. By doing this, it gains a couple advantages. You can start looking at individual residents as no bin, no barrel. This means that if you don't put out a recycling bin, then you shouldn't be putting out a trash bin. This would give us a little more emphasis and control on locating those households who do no recycling whatsoever. The, the advantage as well with the new smart cart system coming up, like I said, this is a good stepping stone towards the smart cart system, but one of the things about the smart cart system is we're still using antiquated bylaws covering our curbside pickup. We need to correct those bylaws. The smart cart system cannot be implemented and say, we're just going to ignore all the old bylaws. These bylaws are long overdue for review and change, and it's important. Another reason why this is an important issue right now is the curbside pickup bidding contract. This is the time where the town puts out in the bidding process for haulers. So by putting out a bid contract that states the town wishes to have weekly recycled pickup, it's just part of the bidding process. Whatever hauler is bidding on that contract, if there's an additional fee for it, Mr. Moran commented, he said, well, in his weekly meetings with the hauler, and he says, it could be anywhere as $150,000 more for the curbside pickup, but that doesn't, doesn't change the fact that within the site assignment, Casella reimburses the town for whatever the curbside pickup is. So it really is no cost to the town if we wish to improve our curbside pickup contract. Am I close to five minutes?
Pretty close.
Okay. Like I said.
If you want five more, like in council.
Like I said, it's just an important issue, the curbside bidding process. I do have an information request with the Town Manager, and I'd like to see the Board of Health address it simply as a motion that the Board of Health and its agents will advocate for weekly recycling.
Mr. Boxton, you're at your five minutes. Do you need five more minutes?
No, I appreciate the council. Like I said, I just came from the other seminar, and I'll probably be returning. Thank you very much.
Okay, the Town Manager has something to say on something that you said.
Just, I know you put in the information request, and just, it is coming, and actually, I drafted something up today. The town did have an RFP that it put out in 2005, that in 2008 was renewed for three additional years. When we looked at that, and we looked at the landfill extension agreement, the landfill extension agreement actually supersedes that contract. So the, there is no need to bid the service out. The service is included within the landfill extension agreement, and it would be done by Casella before you, before you get there. That is actually done as part of Exhibit H in the document, the landfill extension agreement, and it does allow for the town in that Exhibit H to update and change that. So we are going to look at that, and I have this coming out kind of in writing, actually, you kind of beat me to the punch, I was talking to the attorney today, but you will, the council will see that very shortly. But that is basically the, the answer to your public information request, is that that old RFP became null and void when the landfill extension agreement was executed.
But there will be a new RFP established?
No, there will be an opportunity to change the curbside collection program as part of revisions to Exhibit H.
Okay. So in other words, we won't get a chance to revisit the curbside pickup program each, every three years, as was with the RFP process?
Go ahead.
I mean, I won't perpetuate it, but the RFP process, the curbside collection is actually exempt from the procurement law, number one. Number two, it actually falls within the landfill extension agreement. So curbside collection is done by Casella for the next 20 years. What that program is and how that program is conducted is up to the town to decide. So we can make alterations to the program, but it is a Casella obligation as part of that contract.
Okay. So, so the town can make alterations?
Yes.
And do you foresee the town making alterations?
I don't want to allow a debate going on here. I just, I just wanted the Town Manager to give you the information that you had mentioned, and you just straightened it out a little bit.
All right. I appreciate that. I'll look forward to more discussions on this subject.
Thank you, Mr. Boxton. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak to anything that's not on this agenda tonight? Please state your name and address.
James Sotilly, 83 Pine Hill Street. My right to speak about the 2008 abatement appeal I made to the Town Council, which was fully supported by majority members present on this council, and it was returned to a Subcommittee. This relates to the readable, drive-by meters, meter reading, and the council supported me unanimously at the time, and went back to Subcommittee, and the Town Manager was supposed to correct that.
That's not right. Will you tell me to do that?
Well, I have video that I'll make presentation for, that'll prove the point. I just want to warn folks, that folks with exception meters, that they, they will have to comply with the new regulation and have a double read. The Town Manager was, made a promise to me that he would inform the town folk about the exception meters, and he never did. So I just want to make that point, and that the council is aware of the dangers of the, that might be encompassed by, encompassing the drive-by readers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sotilly. I would let you answer.
Yes, I'm going.
He said that you did not.
I'm going strictly by memory, okay, and this is 2008, so this, this goes back a ways. There was an abatement request made for water usage, that the process requires that it go to the DPW Director for disposition. That was dispossessed by the DPW Director, so whatever was going to be done there. There was also a second effort made to approach the council and to go through the council to make that, to have that process be changed. The council, it was really beyond the scope of the council to make that change. We did say that we would do some public information efforts, which I do believe we do put on the website. You can shake your head no all you want. I'm sorry, I won't get into personal debate. We did make some effort to advertise that, and we have that out there. So the two things that came out of that, you know, were complied with, and, you know, so I'm quite frankly shocked that this is reemerging again, that it wasn't done the way I believed it was done.
Thank you, Mr. Sotilly. I just want to add something to that. There has been other citizens, and we have discussed it, and Counselor Logan has discussed it, that have looked for an abatement of some sort because they have catastrophic leaks, and I just don't know where it went off to. I'm getting calls still from the citizen that had a catastrophic break. There is no, no salvation for anybody that has a catastrophic break, I guess. It's up to the Town Manager to do it with any of you. You're going to open up a can of worms here. The drive-by readings are supposed to alleviate some of that, because you'll have a reading quicker, and you'll know if you have a leak. So it, it's better for the whole town, and we were waiting to see how that works out. And I, I feel bad that that happens, it happened to us too, personally. It happened to us. And there was nothing, we had to pay the bill. There was no way, DPW Director made a judgment on it, and that was it. And the bill had to be paid. So, paid the bill. So, that's all I have to say on that issue. Are there any other citi, oh, Counselor Nicola.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to respond on that two-part. One, in response to Mr. Sotilly, if I'm not mistaken, at our last Town Council meeting, Counselor Clements spoke up about the abatement, not the abatement, the.
Exception meter.
The exception meter, and I think discussed a little bit about, about that issue, and that people should be aware of that. Am I correct?
Yes, we said that, that's been brought up more than once, talking about exception meters.
Right.
And I just, once again, wanted to make it clear.
Exactly. And the second part, what you just talked about, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that part of a bylaw that we might have the opportunity to adjust in, say, a General Government Subcommittee if we chose to?
I believe that's what we tried to do. And we didn't, we brought it to General Government, and what happened with it?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think the way I recall things being left off, there was some question about the specific party in question having the correct permits and inspections done on the line that leaked. And the Town Manager found some information about water issues on their property, but not specifically that line. And I think we left it off with, in the stage where the Town Manager was investigating whether the proper permits and inspections were obtained. I think the contention is that the work was permitted, it was inspected, but the, the result of the inspection were lost. And I think that's what.
No, just.
Go ahead, Mr. Counsel.
Just to correct that point, and you're close, that we did go back, and we found some records of, in this case, this is a very specific case. In the specific case, we did look at the record, and what the record showed, and this goes back, I think it was 1983, so I mean, this isn't yesterday, that there was a rough inspection done, which is really the first preliminary inspection that's done, and that there was no record of a final inspection, which is really the final inspection that shows that the installation was done in accordance with code. There was no record that a final inspection had been done in regards to that property.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
State your point of order.
Okay. We are getting into territory where we're talking about something that's not on the agenda. The people and individuals concerned have asked for an opportunity to address this council, have been not afforded the opportunity to address this council, and yet we're delivering information before they, they haven't even been notified to be here that we were going to be even talking about this. And I just think it would do us well to kind of put this on the Subcommittee agenda, get the issue put to, taken care of in the proper context, in the proper format, and not, not discuss it in this manner. I, I think we are on slippery slope here, and we should not be doing this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think that the. Uh, I think that the speaker that came up was owed some kind of a, uh, answer here, so that's why I let it go this way. But, if we wanna shove it back into subcommittee again, and you wanna hold another meeting on this, Mr. Town Manager?
Mr. Chairman, uh, in fairness, uh, the, the individuals have been to several members of the council and I will arrange a meeting with them. We will sit down and go through the file, we will sit down and explain what the situation is, show them the rules and regulations. And in, in terms of the water and sewer rates, we are making a proposed change to the water rates to make it easier for people, propose to do a shut-off, to have a free shut-off for people, that if they're going away for an extended period of time or, or they may be away, and that will come out at the water and sewer rate hearings, which I anticipate hopefully within the next thirty days.
I would hope that you invite everyone that had, uh, a catastrophic break, uh, or has complained about excessive water. Uh, I believe there are maybe...
There's not that many of them.
Three, maybe? Including Mr. Sotilly?
We will definitely make announcement and we do have to put it in the paper about the public hearing.
Okay.
And we will do the public hearing at probably a Thursday evening too. I know there's been criticism in the past that we do it on Monday morning, 'cause that was the way it was done previously.
Okay.
But we'll do it Thursday night.
All right, thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak to anything that's not on this agenda? Are there any other citizens? Seeing none. Move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Swernin, Presentations, we have none. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Vote to Approve the Manager's Recommendation of Michael Reno to the Planning Board for a two-year term to fill the vacancy left by Peter Ramirez. The said term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Council Nicola?
Thank you. I'm just curious on the, uh, interest form as to why this candidate's address is blacked out along with his home telephone and email address.
Generally, generally for town employees, uh, as part of the public records law, we're not supposed to disclose specific, uh, home addresses, so we're just trying to comply with the public records law.
But there is confirmation that he is a, a resident of the town of Southbridge?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they do that for, also for police and fire and...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councils? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Abstained.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Eight yes, one abstained?
Okay, approved. Agenda Item Number Ten, Vote to Move Precinct Two from West Street School to the Community Center at one fifty-three Chestnut Street for voting purposes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, during the subcommittee meeting, I expressed some concern. I, I'm in favor of getting everything in one location if it's feasible. Uh, my major concern was increasing the traffic flow to the area, the number of parking spaces that are there, as, as well as, uh, the fact that we're adding increased activity and traffic into the building. And I wanted to make sure that we would be in compliance as far as the occupancy load of the building based upon its use, and I had asked the manager to look into that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I see Maddie out in the audience, if she wanted to have anything to say about this, but I'll...
Actually, I'll, I'll start.
I can defer to the town manager if any questions, Maddie?
If, if you're okay with that. Um, if, if I recall, um, there was three. One was the occupancy load of the building. Uh, the building official came back and told us that occupancy load is for when you actually have a, a formal, like, auditorium in which people are gonna stay, not people coming in and out. So, he said that the, uh, occupancy load, uh, did not, was not relevant in this circumstance because people vote and then come in and out and circulate. Uh, the same is true for the ADA, that if there was a, an event where you had a set number of seats, that you would need X number of parking spaces, he said, again, because it's a, a transient nature of the, uh, the activity. And the third one was, oh, the sufficient parking. Uh, we do have, he did believe that the parking would be sufficient and we do have the, uh, the back lot has been graded and does allow for additional parking. We will make sure that that gets expanded out. And I know Maddie and I have talked about this and really the next three or four elections we're gonna have are not, non-presidential, which means probably not as heavy of a turnout. So, we'll be able to see over the next three or four elections, um, how this works and if it doesn't work, then we'll be back with a, a proposed change from there.
Okay, I just have one thing, a, a traffic study. Um, there're gonna be more cars coming through these neighborhoods up there, uh, through the, the local roads with this extra, they anticipate, uh, being able to, uh, take that? Chestnut Street, Coombe Street, Morris Street. The neighborhood gonna be, uh...
I think the one thing that, you know, it's interesting, I did a lot of traffic when I was in, uh, in Wellesley, and really what a traffic study would show is the amount of queuing uptime it takes. So, you know, there may be more queuing up if there's more people, but, you know, if someone has to wait thirty seconds versus, you know, fifteen seconds, you know, for the opportunity to vote, I mean, I don't, I don't know...
So, you don't, you don't see a problem then?
I don't necessarily see a problem with the traffic.
All right, thank you. Any other councils? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Randall?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Vote to Ratify Agreement with National Grid to Install a power, power line along Commercial Drive in the amount of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see a hand up there.
Just, uh, maybe through you to the town manager. Chris, just, uh, so we're clear here, uh, the extension agreement requires us to build this road and the way, uh, you've arranged the financing, Casella is paying roughly twenty-five percent of the total cost, and they're not required to make that payment. They're doing this because they wanna sell electricity to the grid.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other councils? Counselor McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just think it's important to point out that, uh, this is also part of developing the segment designated as the industrial park. We can't do it and move forward to get any kind of, um, income coming, income stream coming in in the way of tax base if, unless we get this, uh, line up there, so... And the thing is, I think, uh, as was explained in subcommittee, the approach that the town manager took to this, uh, not only has Casella chipping in, but also has long-term arrangements to, through the resale of electricity with the projects they're gonna be putting up there, back to the grid, to have some type of royalty fee come back to help assist, pay for this. And, uh, so I think it's a, in that regard, he's done his due diligence, uh, should the plan carry on as it's intended, so I will be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, I just have one thing, um, and I brought it up to the town manager and I, I don't see that it says it in here, but I had a question on the easement. The easement is given to National Grid, right? And it's from the town of Southbridge, not Casella giving it to National Grid as it was in the contract?
Actually, in, uh, two thousand and four, the town signed a license agreement for Casella to secure the easement on behalf of National Grid to put the electricity in. So, and that's the appropriate way in which it works.
Well, at that time...
So, there, there is an easement in place for National Grid to install this...
But at the time, I, I was on council in two oh-two and I, I spoke up about that. I said, "Why is Casella giving an easement on town property? That, that land going up there is town property." And they were gonna give the, in other words, Casella was gonna give the easement to National Grid. We own that property, we should be given the easement to National Grid.
Right, a- and that's basically what the license agreement does.
Okay.
The only reason why it was given to Casella was that it was expected that Casella would coordinate with National Grid to install the power line. So, it is an easement from the town to National Grid.
Okay, it's stated that way, 'cause I, I was looking at the contract, uh, with, with National Grid, it was with Casella.
Yeah, no, they, they revised that.
Okay, all right, that's, that was my, that was my question, okay. As long as it's revised.
Yep.
Any other questions, councils? None? Roll call, please.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Vote to Ratify the Amendment Two in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars to close out the Commercial Drive project and the engineering and administrative oversight provided by Weston and Sampson. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. Uh, can you give us an overview, Chris, of what we're getting for the ninety-three thousand, please?
Sure. As part of the road development project, there were additional steps that needed to, um, be undertaken. Those additional steps totaled in which Weston and Sampson was obligated to come up with a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in additional work. Basically, the outline of what that additional work was, was on the, uh, wetland permitting, uh, for conservation purposes, the order condition was actually contested by a resident in a neighboring town. The defense work for us, for just the, uh, Weston and Sampson folks was fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of, there were other design elements that needed to be done. Uh, one of them was that there was a redesign of the, the sewer and water, actually, of the water pump station to make sure that we would have sufficient pressure. Originally, the concept was to put a, um, a, a water tank at the top of the Phase One. Uh, they did design and it is included in this money, uh, a schem- a, a rough, a rough schematic design of a water tank. When the water tank was gonna be done at a later date, they had to upsize the, uh, the water's pump station to make sure that we would be able to get fire flows to the industrial park. So, that additional work, uh, took additional time and effort. And then lastly, on the roadway design and improvements, um, going through the process, that road had to be adjusted here and there in order to minimize its impact to the wetlands, so the road had to be redesigned. Uh, really, if, if you drive the road, if anyone's driven the road, there's a few spots where they have kind of a, a neck down, and those neck downs were designed to kinda minimize the wetlands' impact, that's why it has the neck down elements. All that additional work costs a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. I was able to negotiate with the, uh, the Weston and Sampson folks and said, really, all we have is ninety-three, uh, take it or leave it, and they, uh, decided to, uh, to take it.
Thank you.
Any other councils? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Vote to Ratify the Amendment Number Three and Amendment Number Four from Weston and Sampson, the amount of sixty-six thousand dollars to provide continued site construction for the remainder of the project from February two thousand and eleven to April two thousand and eleven, which is still within the original appropriation amount. Do I have a...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Nicola?
Thank you. Um, through you to the, uh, town manager, Mr. Clark? I, by this, this particular, um, agenda item, does this mean that this project is through April, in April?
Actually, yes and no. For the fundamental components of the original project, yes. That means the three treatment trains, that one was brand-new, the other two were to be taken down and kind of, uh, rehabbed. That work will be done in April. We are also asking for, um, additional work to be done, which is actually part of the next-gen item, and we, we would need to, I think we are gonna try to cover these costs for that additional work, um, under that as well, and that additional work will go until July.
And then that should do it?
And then we should be done, yes.
Thank you very much.
Don't say, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Vote to Ratify the Change Order Number Three from Penta in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars to perform additional work to the wastewater treatment plant facility.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Spinelli?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Livinggood?
Yes.
Counselor Logan?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Vote to Ratify Additional Contingencies Up to Twenty Thousand Dollars for Any Unforeseen Issues That May Arise Between Now and the End of the Project.
So moved.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?[1496.41]